Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded May 16, 2023.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the Portage County Board to order.
More calls.
Roll call.
We have 22 supervisors present. Supervisor Pataki is remote and Supervisor Morrow is excused.
Pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have the invocation for tonight. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Portage County Health and Human Services offers numerous mental health programs, varying from those focused on prevention, education, to intervention, recovery, to prioritize the mental health well-being of the community members to support individuals across all levels of needs. Over 1,260 individuals were served by Portage County Health and Human Service's mental health programs in 2022 alone. As we celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month, we aim to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and promote access to the resources and the services that are available that can positively impact individuals' mental health and overall quality of life. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention the officers. St. Croix County Sheriff Deputy Katie Lessing, her death comes exactly one month after the fatal shooting of two officers in Barron County on April 8th. Officer Emerald Lee Burdenbach, 32, of Sheitek Police Department, and Officer Hunter Shield, 23, of Cameroon Police Department, were killed in a traffic stop. On February, a man shot and killed a Milwaukee police officer, Pete Jervings, after a robbery. And I would ask everybody to keep them in your thoughts, and a moment of silence for all of our fallen officers. Thank you. Members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time. With such comments, subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Anybody from the public wish to speak tonight? Mildred? Just you, Mildred?
No, there's a name on there.
There's a name on there? Okay. Thank you, Mildred. Our assistant's falling down on the job. Thank you. Number 19. And that's Trevor? Trevor Drake? Trevor Drake, is that right?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Come up to the mic. You wanted to speak on number 19, which is authorizing a budget amendment and transfers. Is that right?
Yeah. I just wanted to come down here tonight and extend my gratitude and appreciation to this room of county supervisors. Being born and raised in Portage County, I'm excited to be spearheading a unique asset that's unique to the state and will be pretty impactful for small businesses on a statewide effort and making Portage County a key resource to that. And as nonprofits seek grant fundings, we, funders, get brought into partnership. And Farmshed will go forth, putting Portage County as a major partner forth on our initiative. And once again, I just want to come down here and personally thank everybody in this room.
Thank you. Anybody else? That was it tonight for public input. Wow. All right. Correspondence. Office of the Portage County Clerk, out of office, county resolutions. So they're in your packet. Comments, questions? All right. Presentations tonight. We have Andrea Starr, Portage County Justice Program Director, 2022 Annual Report. She's been looking forward to this for quite a while.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to review very quickly the justice programs annual report for last year. One thing I want to talk about is treatment court. There's some new research that's out there regarding treatment court and why we do what we do. So if you look at the page where we have a list of all of our treatment team, it talks about, it says treatment court research. Down below, you will see, right at the bottom, the last bullet point. When you put a participant in jail for relapsing, they leave jail and use at an increased rate. So some of the new research that's out there that says that 75% of people within three months of leaving the jail or prison will relapse. And so we are working, and we'll see, you'll see this in the annual report of not using jail a lot in our treatment court because we're finding that jail, any type of incarceration does not work, especially for anyone with an opioid addiction. Inmates released in the community are between 10 and 40 times more likely to die of an opioid overdose than the general population, especially within a few weeks of their, of their release. So just be aware that that's why people feel that we enable when we hand out Narcan, but what we're doing is trying to keep them alive. We can't provide treatment if, if they're not alive. And so we do everything we can to do that because they have the right to have the treatment that we provide to them. On the next page, you'll see a graph on there that talks about courts that typically impose jail longer than six days have higher recidivism. Most of the people we work with have done long jail or prison sentences, and jail really has no impact on their sobriety or them not committing crimes. And you can see through that graph that if they are held longer than two weeks, we increase their recidivism 142%. So when people say, well, why aren't you doing more? Why aren't you locking them up? It's because we're just going to increase their recidivism regardless. And so we're trying to use other alternatives than that. The other question I get a lot is, what is your success rate when somebody graduates from treatment court? And the training we went to a few weeks ago indicated that the best treatment courts that do everything correctly, that have all the funding, have everything that's needed, because of the high-risk, high-need population that we work with, about 25% of them will embrace long-term recovery. And so what you see here is that, what is, what is considered long-term recovery? So for our treatment court participants who have a lot of trauma, who grew up in homes that maybe they didn't know where their meals were coming from, where they're going to live, that their family used with them or provided them drugs when they were little, it takes approximately eight to nine years for them to really embrace long-term recovery, and they need about three or four treatment modalities. So if they come into our treatment court, and we have some people that have never been in treatment before, and then we have some people that have, this is their ninth or 10th treatment chance, if you will. And so if we expect somebody for doing this one-and-done and really embracing it, is the research is showing that that isn't going to work. So that's why we allow people that are graduate, graduates, or people that are terminated to come back into our court if they're struggling again, because we know that it takes eight to nine years. The, the graph that you will see there, if they did not have the type of trauma, or they were not as high-risk, high-need, so they would not qualify for a drug court, it takes about three or five years. So we're almost doubling how long it takes for them to embrace recovery. And so I always say, think about your diet that you've started. Have you always stuck with your diet for nine years? And so it, it's somewhat similar. Because if your doctor says, hey, you need to change your eating habits because your cholesterol's high, you're prediabetic, et cetera, et cetera, do you make those changes right away, or do you bauke the system? And a lot of them will bauke the system. And so we really try to work with them, and we understand that it takes multiple times for that to happen. The picture that you see of all the treatment court participants, I, I asked them if they would be willing to be a part of the annual report. And like I said, in the Justice Coalition, they said, hell, yeah. And so we talked about, what would you want to see, what do you want people to know about you? And I gave the suggestion of writing, like, how many days sober you've been. And they said, well, why can't we tell them how much we're worth this? Because we talk a lot in our groups about how they're worth the fight, they're worth the money, they're worth everything because they're, they're a kid, they're a, they're a son, they're a daughter, you know, they're a grandchild. And so they picked the sayings that they wanted to say, and then they put them up there. And then they keep asking me, have you told anyone yet? Have you showed anyone? Have you showed anyone? So they are very happy to be in this. Real quickly about incarceration costs that have been averted. So if we look in 2022, we've had about 3,400 hours, or days, I'm sorry, 3,400 days of people being in our program. And so they would probably be headed to medium-security prisons. So we saved about $284,000 with our program. If they were headed to our jail, $347,000 if they were looking at incarceration. The one slide I always like to talk about is this average effects on crime. When I go to speak at UW Stevens Point, I talk about this a lot, that incarceration is used the most for people that are in, that have an addiction issue, but it's, has no effect on crime, and actually it hurts, it increases recidivism incarcerating somebody. The most effective way to work with somebody on, to help with recidivism and help with addiction is drug courts, but it's the least used because they don't exist. You have to pay extra for them, and people don't like to see drug addicts in the community because they struggle, they still commit crimes, they still use. But if you incarcerate them, they're away from me, so I don't have to see it. So what we do is counterproductive on helping people that are, that have a drug addiction. So I always like to share that slide. Next, real quickly, the day report program. We have a decrease in the number of participants that were in our program from 2021. Myself and Jamie Keener have met with all of the judges to talk about why that is, because it's not like we have a reduction in, in crime here in Portage County. And I think it was just because we had some new judges. So we did some education, and at least this year, the numbers, referrals to our program have increased. We did close to 1,000 breathalyzers and a close to 500 urine analysis in that program. Our pre-trial program has remained basically the same for the number of participants. We've done close to 3,000 breathalyzers and a little over 100 urine tests. The reason so many breathalyzers, that is an OWI program, so primarily people are there because of alcohol use. If you combine the two programs, the money saved for the cost savings, we've had probably about 17,000 days of people receiving programming out of those two programs, and they're used for an alternative than being incarcerated. So the number saved is if we put them in ROPACA, it'd be $665,000 that were saved, or if they were in the Portage County Jail, $1,750,000 were saved with that. Post-supervision program, that's the extension of pre-trial program, the same number of participants from years past, close to 1,000 breathalyzers that are done with that. Primary drug that we test positive for down in the three programs is THC. Second would be methamphetamine down there. And so that information, we use to provide the courts to say, hey, this person is testing positive for if it's heroin, meth, whatever, because we want the courts to know that this person probably has an addiction issue, and maybe that's something they should consider at sentencing. Because really, the research shows that their drug testing and doing alcohol testing has no impact on anybody in pre-trial programming. It doesn't impact them coming to court, and it doesn't have any impact on them committing recidivism. But Portage County has decided that this is something they want to continue doing because they want to know at sentencing if they have a drug or alcohol concern. This year, or last year, we had a second OWI work group. The Public Defender's Office came to me and said, what do we do with second OWI? Because we have no programming. And those are one of the largest arrest rates we have, or highest, next to first OWIs. So we are now going to be including second OWIs in our pre-trial program, which has never happened before. We only had third OWIs or higher. So now we have second OWIs and higher with a high BAC. And we're also going to be focusing on second, second or higher OWIs with people with, under the influence of like, of a drug, because there's a slight increase in that occurring. We're also going to have a focus on people not being able to take that program a second time, which is, when I talked about in drug court, is counterintuitive. But the statutes do not allow people to repeat the programs twice, even though research says they should be able to do that, but the statutes don't allow for that. So we're going to be cracking down on people that have graduated from the post-supervision program. And if they're re-refered because they have another OWI, they are not allowed to, to participate in that program, even though the research says differently. And quickly, the non-monetary bonds work group. So that's what I've been preaching for the public safety assessment for a couple of years. We received the funding to do our, to at least get the process started. So the funding is going to allow us to start with the software program. And if I don't give birth tomorrow, I'm going to be at a meeting with the software people tomorrow to get started on that. And so hopefully we can get that process started early next year. So every person that's in custody and every person that receives a felony summons will be assessed to determine what their risk level is in the community, and if they should be ordered to receive any type of services through our day report or pre-trial program. So I'll leave it at that if there's any questions.
Any questions for Andrea? If not, thank you. Review and approval of April, or I'm sorry, approval of May 2nd, 2023 minutes. Take a motion. Motion by Dubek, seconded by Shabelsky. Discussion, corrections, changes. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Confirmation of county executives' appointments, reapportment of Steve Fritz to the Solid Waste Management Board for a three-year term expiring April 20th, 2026. Motion by Supervisor Marisi, seconded by Supervisor Jankowski. Discussion. You ready?
Please, we don't.
Oh, okay.
It's resolutions only.
If there's no other discussion, Mr. Fritz had been on there as an appointment for a number of years already, and this is just putting him, continuing him in that same role. So there's no other discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, reapportment of Judith Ordens to the Commission on Aging, Aging and Disability Resource Center Board for a three-year term expiring April 2026. Motion by Supervisor Splinter, seconded by Supervisor Olson. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Executive Operations Committee reapportments, reapportment of Mike Olson to the Land and Records Modernization Committee for the remainder of the two-year term expiring April 15th, 2024. Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Gifford. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Town of Sharon Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map. Oh, boy. What was it?
Guadani.
Guan.
Guadani.
Well-gone. Okay, property.
This is resolution number 107-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Keller. Discussion. All those in favor? Oops, hang on. We're going to do electronic.
If you don't want to, we don't, it's up to you.
Everybody feel comfortable, we'll just, we'll just do a voice to keep this thing moving.
Sweet.
We'll see if we can get something done. I told the sheriff an hour, we'll see. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Town of Almond Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Portage County Zoning Ordinance Amendment.
Meccason.
Meccason Farms.
This is resolution 108-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, Town of Plover Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
This is resolution number 109-2022-2024, submitted by the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Barry Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Sislavich. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Resolution to Request the State Revises the Current Real Estate Tax, Real Estate Tax Transfer Fee Revenue Shared Formula.
This is resolution number 110-2022-2024, submitted by the Judicial General Government Committee.
Motion by Matt, Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Discussion. This one here is currently working its way through part of this budget process, and the proposal had us taking a decrease by about 10, 10 cents. Cindy, can you help me out a little bit with this? It was, was it going to go from 30 cents to 20 cents and...
Said I didn't have to answer any questions.
But I told the sheriff we'd make you talk anyway.
Well, that's, that's not what this resolution is. This resolution is asking the board to approve a split, of seeking a split of 50/50 with the Department of Revenue. Currently, we bring in $3 per thousand, we get 20%, the state gets 80%. This would increase that, or change that split from, to 50/50. But what the chairman is speaking about is another bill, SB 274, which is, it hasn't been, it's been introduced, but it hasn't been to committee yet. But what that is, is a proposal to reduce the transfer fee from $3 per thousand to $2 per thousand, and then it would change the split from, to 30%, 30 and 70 for 23 and 24, 40% for 25, and 50% in 26. But at that rate, and with the reduced fee, the way recordings are going, in this economic times, we would be losing money in the next two years. We wouldn't even break even to what we did last year until 26.
A lot going on with real estate transfer fees right now, so.
And if you want to see more of those figures, or talk about that more, I can, we can do that on the side. But the resolution tonight is for the 50/50 split of the $3 per thousand transfer fee.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, approving and authorizing filling the vacant supervisor District III seat for the residual of the unexpired 2022-2024 term by search and appointment.
This is resolution 111-2022-2024, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee.
Moved by Supervisor Marisi, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, authorizing a contract for services for County Highway R roadway and bridge construction project.
This is resolution 112-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Laddick, seconded by Supervisor Soick. Discussion. Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick shout out to our Highway Commissioner Nathan Chek on this. For those of you on the Highway Committee, you probably already know, but there were some trying times with some real estate acquisition in this. With the work of Nathan, his office, in our real estate team, they got it done, and this project's able to go forward. I've never had more calls on a road in Portage County as Highway Committee Chair than I did on Highway R this spring. I would run into people in the supermarket, and they're like, hey, you're on the Highway Committee. Yes. Let me guess, it's about Highway R. And they would tell me how bad Highway R was. My phone rang at home for two weeks, every day, somebody called about County Highway R. So thank you, Commissioner Chek, we appreciate your hard work on this. It doesn't look like you lost too much hair, maybe a few gray ones, but again, it, it was, it was a hard process. So he worked hard and got us through it so we can complete the project this year.
Yes, and I've been kept aware of what's, what's going on out there, and, and it still seems to be some ongoing turbulence, I think, in that area, but working through it. And that's the last section all the way into Highway B then, and that corridor should be real nice when it's all finished, and that, this is the last leg of it. So there's no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, approving and authorizing the real estate purchase agreement for Portage County to purchase approximately 17, 72.41 acres of land from M.S. and S. Enterprises Limited Partnership for the Wetland Mitigation Development Project.
This is resolution 113-2022-2024, submitted by the Highway Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. Supervisor Matt Jakowski, then Supervisor Marisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I hate to toot Nathan's horn too much. His head won't be able to, his, his head won't be able to leave the room, and he'll be asking for a raise. But this is a project that's very unique. When Nathan came to the Highway Committee with this, we didn't know where to put it. He got a group together, they did some studies, and they found the perfect spot in the county. For those of you that don't know where it is, it's on the headwaters, basically, of the Little Plover River. It's a unique site. It abuts to Plover's Dan Mahoney Conservation Conservancy area. It's a unique site that we won't, it sounds like we'll be able to have some wetland mitigation bank, but there's also a possibility that it can be the first dream mitigation area, creek mitigation area in the United States. That's really unique to this site. Nathan did a lot of hard work in getting this. I have to thank the Soicks for being willing sellers on this. It's a great project, and I encourage you to vote yes for it.
Give you some idea how long we've been working on it. I think I was chair of Highway when we were, when we were starting out and working on this. This taken a number of years, and this is not a simple process. And not that we're in the business of making money, but this here will be an asset, I think, and a help to a lot of people in the area as well because of the fact that we have, have this wetland mitigation. Supervisor Marisi?
My question was answered. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
And we can't forget an asset to the Little Plover River as well.
All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, Resolution revising and updating the Code of Ordinance, Section 3.1.5, Portage County Govern, Government Physical Security Policy.
This is resolution number 114-2022-2024, submitted by the Space and Properties Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Oki. Discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, Revision to Portage County Ordinance, 3.11, County Human Resource Policy, 3.11.20 clothing and tool allowance.
This is resolution number 115-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Marisi, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, approving and adopting a revision to Portage County Ordinance, 3.11, County Human Resource Policy to Human Resource Policy to Include 3.11.13.19 Telework.
This is resolution number 116-2022-2024, submitted by the Human Resources Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Duubeck, seconded by Supervisor Marisi. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, Resolution Authorizing an Additional Twenty-Hour Per Week to the Current Twenty-Hour Per Week Judicial Assistant Duties and an Additional Twenty Hours Per Week to the Current Twenty-Hour Per Week Deputy Register of Probate Duties for Circuit Court Branch Two.
This is resolution number 117-2022-2024, submitted by the Judicial General Government Committee, Human Resources Committee, and Finance Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Keller, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, Authorizing a 2023 Budget Amendment and Transfer.
This is resolution number 118-2022-2024, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution does require two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Soik. Discussion. Supervisor Barry Jakowski.
Are we having a Christmas party after this?
No. Our Christmas party one was even longer than this, so I think we've got some, some time built up. That's what it is, so, some credits. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Almost.
Motion by Supervisor Duubeck, seconded by Supervisor Lattick. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.